Students of the Month of the United States of America and true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Kara. First of all, well.
Anybody who was up in comments?
Just a message, just a thing.
Like you made a door?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Public comments. Okay, tonight we have a special presentation, we have two of them, and we're gonna do Students of the Month first. Paul?
How's everybody? Well, this is always a very exciting time when we get to recognize our students. I brought with me this month a first grader, who I remember when she was skipping through the school picking up her older brother when he was at the YMCA program. So I've watched her now for two years, and I've been very excited to see her learn and grow. When I checked in on how she was doing at the beginning of the school year, I've noticed that she is a hard worker. She gets right busy when she's supposed to. She worked the whole time I was watching her class, she was helping her friends, so she really is someone who should be proud. I know I'm proud of her, I know her parents are proud of her, and our whole community is proud of what you're doing, Desiree. We know you are going to be one fabulous student as you go through our school district. You're gonna really go places. So this is a night for us to say thank you to you for being such a great student, and why don't you come on up here, we're gonna get a nice picture? And if everyone can give Desiree a nice hand. This is not the shyness that I see in the school, is it?
I didn't catch Desiree's last name.
Desiree Stewart, sorry, I should've said that. She's gonna come to our school, and she'll come and she'll make sure she sees you in Mrs. Moreno's class, okay? Alright, Desiree, that's yours. So when you put this on your refrigerator, I want you to look at it every day and know how proud we all are, okay?
The five students being recognized from the middle school this evening are what we would describe as upstanding eighth grade students, who are not afraid to include everyone or anyone in our group or circle. I have personally witnessed this group of students take in a student who was sitting alone in the cafeteria and has drastically improved the student's life. They have not only just asked the student to sit with them, but they have included the student in everything they do. That means going out for recess, doing homework during the day, and making the student feel connected and part of a group. These five young ladies are leading the way for other students to demonstrate how easy it is to be aware of others and choose to be kind. I'm extremely proud of each of these students for making such an impact in someone's life, including mine. Kaylee Catlin, Madison Troll, Emma Thompson, Katie Downheimer, and Alexandra, let her come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Judge, I'm the assistant principal at the high school. Mr. Zimmer sends his regrets that he was not able to be here this evening, but he did write some remarks that I will read on his behalf. The High School Student of the Month for September 2018 is Janique Dudley. Janique, come up and join me here. Janique is in the 12th grade. Over the past few years, Janique has played on JV soccer and was a varsity cheerleader. In addition, she's an active member of our school's interact club. When not in school, Janique works part-time at Will Close and also helps to run children's programs at Rock and Horse Ranch. We asked a few of her former teachers to describe what type of person she is. They responded that Janique is compassionate, caring, honest, amazingly creative, that was obviously misphrased, thoughtful, empathetic, and kind-hearted. Ms. Mizel said that Janique's gentleness and compassion, her smile and sly sense of humor, her spirit and energy, all combined to make her the kind of student we all want to have in our classes. She will leave here in June, but she will never leave our hearts. And to quote her math teacher, Mr. Foreman, he stated that Janique is one of his most favorite students of all time. She has the sweetest heart and always lifts his spirits when he sees her. She is such a great friend to her classmates. Janique inspires him to be a better teacher every day. Congratulations to Janique.
In my message yesterday, the whole of my talk about that any job worth doing is worth doing right. And clearly, the students we have here are doing things right. So keep up the great work, great Husky pride, we're all very proud of you. Congratulations. So true, Mr. Bonjovi, but I would like to extend that also to the families, because we know that that does start at home and it comes into our schools, and certainly thank you to all the parents and families.
Our second special presentation tonight would be a report on the briefing work that is going on at the middle school. And that would be Chris Parker.
I'm sure that it's possible that the students, even though they have no school tomorrow, they might have a lot of homework to do tonight. So at this time, unless you want to stay, I can excuse you from the meeting. Okay, students?
You're welcome.
Just an idea.
Great job.
This one yours? Take it.
Oh, take it first.
Oh, no, no, no. Hi, good to be here. I'm Chris Parker. I'm a retired teacher. I worked in the district for 25 years. Before that, I taught in Harlem. Since I've been retired, I've worked as a consultant coach in the district, part-time. And I'm very, very grateful for my role, and I appreciate the board allowing me to do this. One of the tasks that I was given, one of the tasks that I was given last year, in the fall, was ended up being related to and ended up, as a result of that, the middle school has taken on an independent reading program. So I appreciate giving me this opportunity to provide you with some information about the program. It's been very enthusiastically received by students, by teachers, administrators, and myself. So I've shared with the board a kind of timeline of the program, and if anyone else would like a copy of that, I have it here. So last year, as I said, in the fall, I was given a task, really. I was asked to improve student outcomes, help teachers to improve student outcomes in test scores through two cohorts, special needs students and economically disadvantaged students, who were cited on the last plan that we had last year. So I met with each of the grade level teams to talk about that, to share that, the information, the local data, the data about those students. We looked at the data, and we realized that these students were very obviously also struggling readers. They didn't just do poorly on tests, but they were struggling readers. No real surprise to anyone. So the teachers had great discussions about what they were going to do with that list. This was, I presented it to them as a problem for them to solve. And we had some great discussions. The teachers started saying, well, these are the same students who don't read outside of class. And we're trying to address reading skills within the content area, because this is middle school, so we're content areaing the teachers, using a variety of strategies, close reading strategies, vocabulary strategies, but we really have a feeling these are students who aren't reading once they leave school, once they leave the classroom. So we started looking at data around independent reading. It's pretty frightening when you look at national data we're talking about. So according to the National Center on Educational Statistics, since 1984, the portion of tweens and teens who read for pleasure once a week or more has dropped. Thirteen-year-olds from 70 to 53 percent, and seventeen-year-olds from 64 to 40 percent. The portion who say they never or hardly ever read has gone from 8 percent to 22 percent of thirteen-year-olds. So teachers drew the conclusion that their assumption was right. Students were not reading outside of class, particularly those students who are struggling readers, those students who are doing poorly on test scores. So the next step was to then look at, alright, well, what is the impact of independent reading? And for board members and those of you who have the handout, if you look at the 20 minutes a night reading data, and most educators are familiar with this data, it becomes very apparent that the more students read, not only do they become better readers, but they also score better on tests. So if you look at a student who reads a minute a day, that's the equivalent of 180 minutes per school year, 8,000 words a year, and that student is statistically apt to score within the 10th percentile on standardized tests. There's data for five minutes, I won't go over that. 20 minutes a day is the equivalent of 3,600 minutes per school year, 1,800 words per year, and that student's more apt, or statistically apt, to score within the 90th percentile on state tests. So the next step was, obviously, how do we get them to do that? How do we, you know, how do we encourage students? How do we motivate students to read outside of class? So teachers talked about a variety of things. Elise Jacomo, I was at a seventh grade meeting, and she said she had, was familiar with a couple of independent reading programs in different districts, one in the Sun's district and another in the local district. And she brought some information about independent reading to Child Study, to share with the seventh grade team. I brought some additional information, and the teachers came to a consensus in seventh grade that what they wanted to do was start an SSR, silent reading program, in the seventh grade. Seventh grade teachers talked to the eighth grade teachers, seventh grade team talks to the eighth grade team, eighth grade team goes, they come to a consensus that they're on board. Go to the sixth grade team, sixth grade team already had an independent reading program in place, actually, all of the ELA teachers did, but the difference was, they really wanted to provide students with an opportunity during the school day to read, and reinforce reading as a pleasurable activity in school. So it was kind of miraculous, actually, really, because this came from teachers. Megan and Dan are incredibly supportive of this, but this is, they were presented with the problem, and they came up with a solution, and they've been working on it ever since, and they'll, the plan is to continue working on this, on this project. And I have to say, the one thing I did say to them was, whatever you come up with, please make it sustainable, because, you know, we all know we're given tests to do, because this year you're cited for this, or there's this plan or that plan, and you check a box and you do it, you jump through the hoop, and then the following year, or the following month, or the following whatever, it doesn't, nothing happens. So I'm really, really proud of them that they came to this consensus. And the process is ongoing, because it's like, okay, we're gonna do this, how are we gonna do it? So they started looking at, they started looking at information about successful silent reading programs or independent reading programs. They started out with a survey, got some information about students' current reading habits, what kind of reading materials they had accessible at home, whether they had any or not, and what were they, did their families read, what did they like to read, did they like to read, why didn't they read? So they started with that information, which was very helpful to them. And then throughout the process, they really, and this is really important, I think, as well, they've continued to get feedback. They've continued to get feedback from the kids, hoping to get more feedback from parents and more involvement from parents as time goes on, but verbal feedback from kids, and also additional kind of informal surveys and anecdotal kinds of things, and then at the end of the year, finally, a more formal survey. Students said, partway through the process, what they really enjoyed was, what they really liked was having the opportunity to choose something they wanted to read that was really, really, really important to them, having time in school to read it, the fact that the teachers were reading too. Yes, Megan's nodding her head. It's really important, and actually, teachers are really getting into this. And so this kind of surprised us all, but they really liked the quiet. If any of you who aren't middle school teachers have been in a middle school, the activity level is, I mean, the energy, it's wonderful, but there's not a lot of opportunity for just downtime. It's just really, they use words like, you know, it's peaceful, it's quiet, it's calming. It was, that part, that part was very, very, very interesting. So let me explain to you how the program works. So then it was like, okay, so how, when in the day are we gonna give them an opportunity to do this? Sixth grade does it in ELA because they have a block, so they can do it in ELA. So what they, there was a lot heated discussion over this, but they did finally come to consensus that they were going to rotate subjects, and teachers would provide an opportunity, and they would read and provide an opportunity for students to read the first 15, 20 minutes of a class on their day. So Monday is math, I may not have this right, Tuesday is science or social studies, I can't remember, Wednesday are all the special areas, wherever you are, foreign language or home and career, Thursday is either science or social studies, I might have this.
Science is on Tuesday.
Okay, science is on Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday is ELA. So everyone is literally reading every day, and what this looks like is everyone is walking around the school with a book, like a book that they want to read, or a magazine. Lots of wonderful, wonderful things are happening, I can tell you anecdotally, I've been in classes, I'm just in a class today, and a student was doing a book review for a raffle we're going to have, or a luncheon we're gonna have. She was doing this book review, and the teacher said, oh, you meant that, my son read that one. And the kid said, oh, really? And they had this little question. Yeah, and we actually named our dog after one of the characters in the book, and there's conversations about the movie, dah dah dah. And some other kids said they had read the book, they hadn't seen the movie either. So there are all these wonderful conversations and experiences that are, kids, students and teachers are having. Carol Delia, one day, started crying while she was reading, just, you know, tearing up a little bit, and the kids were freaked out, they were just, what's the matter? And she said, I'm sorry. And then kids started talking about sad parts of books, parts in books that they've read. So it's, kids are reading the same books, starting their own little book clubs, kids are swapping books, you know, trading books, this is good, this is bad. So it's absolutely wonderful to see this culture of literacy beginning to evolve in the middle school. Teachers are enjoying it. Lindsay said, when she saw me, she said, when are you starting SSR? She said, I didn't read much this summer, I can't wait to get back into reading. Which I thought, Tom Trissello said to me, Neil, I understand why the kids want to choose a book, he said, because I was reading professional, I was doing my professional reading during that time, you know? And not that you're required to do that anymore, but there's a sense of obligation to keep up on what state ed says and whatever, your professional organizations, newsletters, blah, blah, blah. And he said, you know, so I was like, yeah. And then I finally said, forget it, I'm just gonna bring in something that I really would want to read that I wouldn't normally have time to read. And he said, no, I'd love it, I'd like to look forward to that day. By the way, for those of you who don't know, he's a math teacher. They were the, they were the last holdout to give up. If anybody knows math teachers, they do not give up any time in their classroom unless someone twists their arm, but they're on board now. So as we move forward, throughout the year, teams are still, they're still meeting, they're still talking about it, they're still problem solving. There are problems with, students, of course, forgot their book, so we established little mini classroom libraries for teachers who didn't have pleasurable reading material in their classroom, for kids who forgot. They came up with a system to communicate with one another so that they would know if the same student was forgetting their book every day, because they kind of figured that out. So it's, it's great that they're able to have continued conversations about reading, about literacy, and be excited with this so badly. So next step was, so again, you know, okay, we're doing this, but they didn't, they didn't settle for just that. It got to be the end of the year, and they were like, what about summer? What's gonna happen over the summer to this kid? Motivated them to read. So worked on it, and came up with not really a formalized summer reading program, but Suzanne Fagno got information about the New York State Library Program, we got information about the public library program, we had a contest, anyone who brought their library, public library card in, or the application filled out, which we provided, was given a prize. Megan, I don't know, magically, we were gonna do like ice cream or something, magically, Megan called the PTA and got Kindles and gift cards, and it was wonderful. So that kind of kicked it off. And then, again, I went to administration, Sarah had said, I really need to talk to people, like I'm bouncing from sixth grade meeting to seventh grade meeting, telling the sixth grade what the seventh grade said, because no one has the same, very few people across teens have the same prep period or the same time together. So I was kind of, so we formulated a committee, sixth grade representative, Alyssa Moreno, seventh grade, Elise Jacomo, who's kind of the catalyst for this whole thing, and eighth, Carol Delia, Suzanne Fagno, of course, our librarian, Megan and Dan. So we met for a half day, we did a little bit of planning for the summer program, and then we met over the summer. And we met for a day, and the teachers are really motivating. When I, when I heard teachers say this, I really got choked up. I kept hearing this phrase out, you know, we really need to establish a culture of literacy here in the building. Really does my heart good? Does my heart good? So that's where they're headed. They're, we met, we have plans to have a parent table at meet the teachers night, I still can't get used to not calling it open house, that's how old I am, and we'll have information about this is a silent reading program, we'll have information from the public library, from the PTA, we're going to have a raffle. This is Alyssa Moreno came up with, reading role models, and parents are going to enter a title and an author of a book that they favorite, and we'll raffle off a Barnes and Noble gift card at the end of the night. Hopefully, they'll let us take a picture of them, and we will, you know, hopefully be able to post our reading role models somewhere online, or whatever. Teachers came up with lists of ideas, of things to do to kind of supplement and create this culture of literacy in addition to that. Next week is the kickoff week, I keep calling it independent reading SSR, a million different names. Students are gonna choose a name, they're gonna have contests, choose a name, choose a slogan, have a celebratory lunch for the students who read over the summer, and some other activities to keep it off, and things will start officially, the schedule will start officially on September 28th. We planned tours of the public library, fifth grade, who are now our current sixth grade, went in the spring, schedule in the spring in the middle schools, so that didn't happen, but it will happen in October. We have four dates in October, the kids will just walk over during lunch, anyone who would like to go will walk over during lunch, and Caitlin Stevers, who is the team librarian there, will give them a tour, beautiful team room, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with that. They have lots of other ideas, birthday books, Chipotle incentive program, book swaps, speed dating, book passes, displays, of course, and online posts, contests, we're hoping, these are, these are all in the talking stage, but these are ideas, and great ideas that teachers have come up with. Skyping with high school students to talk about books that they're reading and enjoying, so, and book conferencing, and book clubs, and the list just goes on and on. So we're hoping to keep the momentum going, the conversations going, and the readings going. End of the year, last year, we did a survey, I shared with you some of the data, 57 percent of the students said they read more this year than in the past. 42 percent said they read most often during independent reading time, so it is really important. One of, in the initial survey, one of the reasons students gave, many students gave for not reading for pleasure was that they didn't have time. Now, we all say, I don't have time to go to the gym, I don't have time to do a lot of these, but they do, and some of our more accomplished, involved students do have schedules that'll make your head spin, right? And they need well-intentioned. And some of those students did give us feedback that they really appreciate having the time to read. 80 percent of the students said that they read five books, and we And we started, I think, I can remember, like maybe the end of October-ish year. The conversation, yeah, the conversation started in September, like, "What are we going to do about this?" And so sixteen percent of the students read thirteen or more books, which I thought was impressive. And then we used this, we did a monkey survey. And so we did the survey, we used the survey to gather some other information that would be helpful to us moving forward. Like forty-four percent of students said that they either bought or were given books, which kind of surprised me. Most students said they had a bookshelf and they had books. The majority of students in the district have a bookshelf, whether they read them or not. I mean, we all know as parents, buy the books and buy the books. Seventy percent chose books based on the topic or genre. And then they gave us, we asked them about which genre. Suzanne is working on, what is the word she uses? I don't think it's a real word. Genre-ization. Genre-ification, yeah. Not generification, but genre-ification of the library or something. Anyway, so. So it's been, it's been very enthusiastic for us. And I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to share something so positive with the board and everyone else who is here. We don't have ELA data, but the STAR data also indicates that students have shown significant growth in reading. I did get some data from Beth Neenan at the end of the day today, our remedial reading teacher, which was really impressive. So of course she works with the students that we are concerned about in terms of reading and test scores. Forty percent of her students, according to the STAR data, and that would be from November, it was a pre-test, in June. So it wasn't even a full year, increased by between one and two grade levels. And sixty percent of her students increased by more than two to three grade levels, which is really impressive for that group. Now, I personally would like to give Beth credit for that. But Beth said, "Thank you very much, but I've never seen schools like that. I've never seen an increase quite like this in my students." So she's bouncing it there to us. So thank you very much.
Does the program continue again this time, this year?
Yes, yes. Many of the, many of the events that I was talking about are happening now. The kickoff is next week. Going to the library is October. And all those ideas that teachers have for the book swaps and the contests and all, they will happen throughout. The students will be reading every day throughout the year.
Did it start last year?
It started last year. We got a late start because of the way it started, you know. And again, you know, I can't say enough about how appreciative I am to the board, to the administration, to Megan and Dan. But I really have to give kudos to the teachers. This is really something that they've taken on, that they're very proud of and excited about. And it's a lot of work, so I want to give credit where credit is due.
Thank you. You had mentioned that students read every day. What is the time for the independent reading? Is it twenty minutes, ten minutes?
It's fifteen to twenty minutes a day in a designated class period for seventh and eighth graders. So Monday in math, the first, they know. We have schedules everywhere and we encourage students and most of them do just carry their book around with them, you know. Because that's the idea. If you're finished early, if you go to study hall, if you're in lunch. So they know. On Monday, when they go to math, they're going to be reading for the first fifteen or twenty minutes. On Tuesday, it'll be science or something. Yeah, I remember the science, whatever. So, yeah.
It's a great way that, you know, students at middle school age tend to start to move away from, you know, reading on their own. You know, there's so many other distractions in their lives. So the fact that the school gives them time, in a middle school, it does a lot of things. It gives them that fifteen, twenty minutes every day where they probably wouldn't be reading that much. And in a middle school environment, it definitely calms the middle school down. Middle schools can be full of energy, definitely.
You had mentioned that the kids can choose the reading material that they want. Does the teacher ever meet with the student to see whether or not the student is grasping the concept of what they're reading?
Yes, it's not done, it's not done formally because those kinds of reading comprehension strategies are addressed every day in every class. So explicit instruction involved, you know, related to reading comprehension and reading fluency are skills that teachers address on an ongoing basis. But yes, there's certainly, and there are teachers, and this is selective. There are ELA teachers who do, in fact, most of the ELA teachers do have some means of accountability, some written piece that students hand in when they finish a book. And then teachers have conversations with the kids about books. But trying really hard to make sure that this is something that they're highly motivated to do and that they own. It's really important for middle school students. I think it's important for everyone. I think that's why the teachers bought into this because they had a voice in the solution to the problem and they came to consensus on how they were going to do it collectively as a group. And they're moving forward.
Thank you, Chris. Moving on to acceptance of reports. The result of the Order of Education on the recommendation of the superintendent approves and acknowledges reviewing the following reports. Order of Education meeting minutes, August 20, 2018. Treasure reports, June, July and August of 2018. Treasure report, general fund, June, let's see. School lunch fund, special aid fund, and capital fund. Have a motion, please. And, okay, any discussion?
I have to say, this is the first time we've ever gotten reports before the audit. This is, usually we're not allowed to see it before the audit. It's great.
We want to provide you with as much as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Can you roll a favor?
Aye.
Hold. Okay, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, well, first I wanted, I wasn't here at last Tuesday's meeting, so I wanted to just express that we had an extremely smooth opening. And that does not happen just by coincidence. A lot of people that go into making our opening as smooth as it does. So I'd like to just thank the O and M staff. Our building looks phenomenal. When you get a chance to come down and look at our new gym, it's not new, but it looks brand new. I mean, the walls were redone, the floors were redone. The space looks like it's finally in the new century. It's beautiful space, so please stop by and take a look at that. So thank you, Mr. Miller and your crew. Our grounds look great. Kathy, what an incredible addition to our district. Transportation issues are handled like that. So thank you very much. She's been at our school every morning, every afternoon. Any concerns that come up, she's there to handle them in real time. That is huge and so appreciated by the families, my staff, myself, the bus drivers. I know they're all raving, so thank you so much. You've done such a great job. And then just a couple of thank yous of some things that have come up in the last week. The Towne Lloyd Police stopped by a few days ago and dropped off so many more backpacks than we could ever count with just an inordinate amount of supplies, that no one should be in need of any supplies. So if you know of anyone who needs any school supplies, I don't care if it's from our school, middle school, high school, I know they got them as well, but stop by. We've got, if someone's in need, we've got tons of supplies and we're ready to give them out. So thank the Towne Lloyd for that, for that push that they did this summer. And then this Thursday, the Rotary will be stopping by, Thursday morning at eight o'clock, to drop off a hundred and thirty books for our fourth grade that ties in with our curriculum. If you remember, a few years back, they used to do the dictionaries and thesauruses. Well, dictionaries and thesauruses are now more of an online thing. Not that we don't have them in paper copy, but we thought getting books into the hands of children would be a more beneficial way of using the funds that they collect every year. So they'll be dropping off, I think it's about a hundred and thirty books on Thursday morning. I know superintendent's going to be there to help accept those and we'll get a picture for the website. And then just an update, tomorrow morning, we will be interviewing for our database clerk and then all my positions should be filled. Fingers crossed. So it's, the office not having a full staff has been a little uneasy at times, but we've done our best to try to not let the families feel it and not let the school feel it. So I think we've been successful. So thanks to Denise Fossey because I wouldn't have been able to do it without her. She works more than, yeah. So does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Me being everybody. I want to add just one thing to Chris Parker's presentation. You heard her say regularly, "This came from the teachers." Four years ago, Sarah, five years ago, I went out to a conference about professional learning communities. Many of us have gone to them now. This is what they say works, that professional learning communities. The teachers are presented with the data, they get into conversations, they solve the problems, right? And then they own them because it's not somebody saying, "You will do this." It's them saying, "We want to do this." We're turning that right back with our kids. We want our, we, our teachers are now starting to put problems in front of kids and say, "Solve these problems." And then all the learning is going along with that. And it's pretty amazing to watch the kids be motivated. I had kids run up to me the other day in the cafeteria and say, "We really want to talk to you about the dress code." I go, "What do you, what do you mean?" They go, "Well, we think this, this and this." I go, "Where are you talking about this?" "Well, we're talking about this in our ELA class." I go, "Are you doing research? Are you finding, are you being able to write papers about it? Are you going to be able to do a presentation to me about it?" And they're like, "Yes, that is what we're working on." And through all that, they're learning all the skills they need. Really to get out there, working together in groups, right? So this is really where a lot of this is going and it's so great to watch. Okay, our PBIS assembly that we did, the kickoff for, was just so fantastic. Our kids have so much fun. They go over all the rules again. They really integrate them. They play games, just watch them run up and down and play relay races. And they're chosen because they are able to answer questions correctly about what the rules of the building are. It's really fantastic to watch. That was on Friday. It was a great time. This is our, I want to show our new agenda to everybody. Last year, at the end of the school year, Megan worked with all the teachers about what they needed in a new agenda for students, okay? This is what we came up with, okay? This is now all but being required that every student have this with them every single period, okay? And here you will find all of our school calendars, our belt schedules, our whole student handbook. Goes all through that. It keeps going. PBIS is in here. We keep going. All of our clubs are in here. All this information is available for students right in front of them. We have resources in here, multiplication charts, geometry, maps, things where we're looking. And this is the biggest part that teachers wanted. They wanted a spot where students could really not only see the month calendar and plan, but then each week, write each day, write down their assignments very clearly. Parents are thrilled. Every parent I've talked to at this point says, "Wow, this is so great." So that's new. I wanted to show you that. It's a big thing. And then I've met with Suzanne Baxter from the county once about a drug prevention program called Too Good For Drugs. She'll be in again next week to talk with the teachers. We kicked that off. We've got the schedule all set up, ready to go. It'll be from beginning of October through December. Every sixth grader will be exposed to ten separate lessons. I've seen the outline of the lessons at this point. Letter will go home to parents. We're all set, ready to go with that. So it starts October and through December. All right? Any questions? This is, and you literally see kids, I mean, I walked down the hallway and every kid, we see it.
Yeah. Every student gets one on the house?
Every student gets one on the house and we have a bunch of excellent ones. We're not going to let students be without them.
If they lose, if they lose one, do they get another one?
Depends on the situation. We will absolutely make sure they have one, no matter what. If, you know, we're trying to hold people responsible, but there's situations where we just have to say.
Yeah, but this is great.
Okay. Megan worked with all of the teachers about what they needed in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening. I just have a couple of additions to add to Mr. Zimmer's principal report. First, we did host class meetings on September 12th and 13th. During them, you know, we did the usual welcome back, the review of the code of conduct, things of that nature. But also we focused a lot of our time on trying to frame the mindset of our students to focus on all of the things that they have to be proud about as students at Highland High School as well. Hoping that if we start the year with that mindset, it's something that we can continue to build off of. Our STEM program is up and running. We're very excited that Mr. Watts has his classes going. We're starting with two Principles of Engineering course and a Computer Science course as where we're going to start from to build on in future years. We're also very excited that with our staffing changes, we were able to add both a reading lab and a math lab, which is our version of AAS classes, which is the first time the high school has had AAS courses in a very long time to help support our students that are struggling in both reading and math. And then lastly, I'm sure you've already seen it a little bit on the school's social media, but Olivia Armstrong, 2010 high school alumni, did take home an Emmy award for outstanding creative achievement in interaction media within a scripted program. I don't know how they put that all on an Emmy. But for the HBO series Westworld, Olivia, in all of her sweetness, credited some of her teachers at the high school, such as Ms. Mizel, Mr. Heath and some others with her success. And she was quoted saying, "Your guys has been my chief inspiration all these years and I am truly grateful." So it's really wonderful that in her success, she is, you know, talking about how her high school career helped to get her there. And we definitely, you know, want to send a congratulations to her, the family, all of the teachers that helped to get her there. Because as you know, the beautiful part of being in a community is that when one person in a community wins, we all win. So that's that. Does anyone have any questions?
For the stimulus, are those targeted towards upper class then?
Nope. So anyone that had the availability. So the way that it kind of went was we were afraid that if we just placed it in the master schedule, it would be incredibly limiting because of the fact we didn't know what students would want those courses because the addition of the teacher came after students did their course selections. So Mr. Watts did some recruiting. He went into every study hall, every available period, figured out who would want to take the courses. And then we analyzed what their schedules were to decide when those courses should be offered so that the most amount of students that wanted to take the courses had the availability to. So instead of trying to fit them into our master schedule, we made our master schedule fit for the students. And they are mixed grades.
Are those classes full at this point or?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, I know that they're healthy, but that's something that we could get to you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
The director's multiple reports Maria.
In addition to my report, I want to say that we're off to a good start. We are starting to offer some new items. We did Brussels sprouts and it was very well received at the high school. So now we're going. Now we're going out to the elementary next week and the middle school the week after that. And we're planning on some food tastings. We have a spicy fish filet, we're going to try that at the high school. We have Jamaican beef patties. Elementary, I'm going to try fish nuggets. For some reason that didn't feel good in my mouth. Other school dishes have had success with them and it's something new. So for the kids, because they get a little bored. So I've challenged each kitchen to come up with something new once a month so we can share.
Well, the kitchens look great, I saw the little personal pizzas. They're very popular. I see them making the paninis, the panini makers, that's very popular. The salads look great, the fresh vegetable cups, so really it's fantastic.
Thank you. I think they do take pride in their vegetables selection. Every day there is a selection of vegetables, so when the kids come through, they can find something they like besides a hot vegetable. We're trying to incorporate more fresh fruit, that can be a little bit more labor intensive. Sometimes we can't do, you know, cantaloupes for everybody for 400. So we're going that way. We did smashed potatoes and that was something new for the middle school.
What's a smashed potato as opposed to mashed?
Well, the mashed potatoes are instant. Trying to get away from instant. So the smashed are real potatoes that you buy at the store and you have to crack them and you put them in the, in the big beater and we just kind of smash them. So there's like chunks.
And sort of boiled up, right?
Yeah, so the high school is more receptive than the middle school. You gotta try, like they say 10 times before the kids will accept. So we're going to keep going, but they love the roasted potatoes. So we like to 100 pound roasted potatoes and they're fine. So we're looking for some new ideas if the kids have some or open.
Now, I don't know if it meets the requirements, but I heard some parents talking about, it's like a tater tot, but it's cauliflower and that they're very tasty. I don't know, you know, if that could fit into the requirements, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, we can look, it's not on our bid, but we can certainly look, you know, to the vendors to see what they have.
And all the equipment working okay so far? I might have asked this last week, I don't recall, but I just want to make sure that if there's any issues, we identify those early and get them addressed.
We have a list of Mr. Miller, like some, some of the equipment need to be leveled a little bit.
Okay, a little funny tuning.
Mm-hmm, our steamer was fixed with the plumber. Our brazer, we're waiting for a lesson. It's a big kettle that is really a frying pan and a pot and a kettle in one. So we want to make sure we maximize the use of that. So we're waiting for, yeah, we're waiting for some training on that.
Great.
And we did send one panini machine down to the middle school to capture more sales there.
I think you have a year under your belt of the breakfast to go in the classroom. How do you, how do you think one?
Well, we have the kiosk out in the elementary cafeteria. We moved it toward the outside door so kids could come right in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And there is a set of kids that like to go there and that there is less choice there. So I think Debbie Tompkins is a draw. They really love to go and talk to her in the morning. Yeah, so then she loves it, she loves working with the kids. And this year I'm going to do a kiosk at the high school. Actually, I saved a couple pieces of the old serving line and we're going to put it out in the hallway in the morning. Again, limited choice to capture some more kids for just a bagel and fruit kind of breakfast. And Dan is interested in increasing his breakfast sales, but we have to figure out how to do that.
Our reason is about timing, when kids arrive and class starts and problems like that.
Any other questions?
Thank you Maria.
Our state data is still embargoed. We have a rumor that it's going to be released Monday, so we have our fingers crossed. I called the RIC to see if they heard that rumor and the RIC told me that they had not. So they were still looking at the end of September, beginning of October for data to be released, but we have our fingers crossed. We have given the reports for academic intervention services to the principals so that they can get started with that. We.
What does that mean, reports? I don't know if my colleagues are aware of what that means.
Sure, sure. What I do is I look over the state scores and I put them in alphabetical order and then I take it sorted by the actual score order. And I tend to be a little conservative, so and I believe these numbers need to be triangulated, not with just state scores, but benchmarks, classroom scores, and also other benchmarks and tools that we use and the, and the grade levels. So this way it's triangulated and we get a real 3D picture of the kid if they really need academic intervention services. Because one snapshots in time are, no matter what it is, it's not really a healthy way to look at kids. So I tend to be a little bit conservative and I went through and pretty much the number for, for high school with some of the scores I went through, when they were looking for AAS for the eighth grade going up to ninth, I said 610 with math might be where you want to look and under. Because with 610, even though that's a low three, if the kids guessed on three or four of the responses, they're really a high two and they should be getting services on. So I take into account a factor of guessing.
Are you finding a strong correlation between the ELA and math as well and our benchmark? Given that such a large population doesn't take.
I actually am just starting to look at that, but I can tell you our, I can't tell you what they are, but I can tell you our scores are strong and you can see a steady progression.
Well, I'm just more concerned that given that such a large population doesn't take the ELA and the math, you know, that they're like, yeah, I want to make sure our benchmarks show an accurate picture. So I'm just wondering if the correlation between the ones that actually take the test.
I'm gonna, yeah, we'll look at that. Right now what I'm doing is, nobody looked at the fourth quarter benchmarks. So I'm actually down in the elementary school, which is great for me because I'm getting to meet the teachers and get in and meet the students and I'm going through on recording and I'm seeing some really good data. And it's also giving me some ideas of what needs to be done with the assessments and how they need to be tweaked. So I think that that's going to be healthy. I also am going to be taking that data and streaming it over time so we can look at students when they were in kindergarten for a sec, so we can see how they progressed going up that way longitudinally. And then I also am going to look at it as a correlation between the state tests and the benchmark. I haven't done that yet. One of the things I have to do for some of the assessments is I have to create what's called a blueprint or an item map. So I have to take that question, align it to a standard and then compare that, the four of them, to what the state tests. And our assessments are actually pretty, when we look at like kindergarten through fifth grade, there's 40 questions on every assessment. One of the things that I shared with Sarah was when I looked at kindergarten and first grade, I really saw a fatigue pattern. And a fatigue pattern is something that a large number of students score poorly in the last five or more questions on the test for that day. And that shows me that the test is too long. So one of the things I talked about was 40 questions for kindergartners, a lot. So I would like to at least, yeah, I'd like to have it, but especially since we're talking about moving their APPRs to, I can't think of the, yeah, the living environment, biology, the living environment test. And I think that'll help the teachers move along with me with that. And I can tell you they're very receptive. I sent out today a list of grade level meetings I'll be at, at their grade levels. So I'm trying to hit every grade level at least five or six times within the next year. And then if they want to meet with me individually, even more, I'm available. But I'm going to be in their buildings for grade level teams. And I'm going to help them look at the data and understand, see what we can do to streamline the tests and make it a little bit more appropriate for K1, possibly two. And then what's interesting is the 40 questions, once you get up to the fourth and fifth grade, it's just a one-period test, it's like a one, they expect to do it in an hour. So where it's very laborious for first kindergarten, first second, it's more appropriate for three, four, five.
Only because it's problematic to data, but in our open houses for the elementary school and the middle school, was there any themes of increasing that participation in the state assessments? Because you're seeing that as a key data point and on the average, 40% of them, 50% of them are not going to be there.
That's my conservative line with that.
That's why I'm very cautious and I'm very conservative too. One of the things that we have to with data, our student, we have to understand that a student is considered a volatile variable. And what that means is it's not stable. And if we think of our students as human beings, we're emotional. And our students' lives, I mean, there are so much more drama that they go on with in their lives than even I could think of when I was their age. I just, some of them, and when I hear the stories and the things that they go through each day, I applaud them because I don't know how they even make it through the day of school because I would have given up. Their lives are truly horrendous. So when you look at that and you're asking a kid who might be homeless or the father left and they're not sure if their mother's going to pick them up after school or they're hungry and they don't have anything to eat at home, and there's just so many things. And then we're placing it on a New York state exam. There's too many like law of averages, every 10 questions, you fill in just any bubble, that same letter, averages, you're going to get two of those correct out of the 10.
So the answer is no. No, there isn't an air of increasing participation or any of that.
I would love to see it, but.
We're building towards that.
My goal was to eventually have a curriculum for assessment.
I'm going to work that into my Monday messages also.
Yeah.
As I start.
Maybe that's number 37.
37, 5.
Another 22 and it's not the one you came out and did it this way.
No, no, I'm keeping track.
He has.
No, no, we're well aware of the challenges. We know, but our duty is still to prepare students for the world beyond.
We even hired testing later on in college and the problem with this, as much as, there were significant problems with Pearson when they were creating the test.
Oh.
And the fatigue was not a small one either.
No.
They were putting experimental sections early on, so the students were hitting a wall of fatigue right at the beginning of the test.
Yes.
And so I think the parents' concerns were valid, but I think there have been efforts made to remediate that. And I think parents have to try and meet halfway and realize that by not testing them now or keeping the students out of testing for so long, it's only going to be detrimental to their experiences later on.
I use testing as a sport and there are certain skills that should be introduced at certain grades. Like for example, third grade in basketball, you introduce a coach and the full court. You might not play as long, but you're introduced to that. Same with soccer. And when you look at testing, third grade, what are we introducing? We're introducing state ed, which is really the referee and testing conditions. So my first question when I look at a state exam for third grade, I look at, was the test too long? I look at endurance, so it's usually the first thing I look at for third.
The state issues a test, we don't have a say in that.
No, it takes two years.
You know, I understand.
I'm hoping, Commissioner Aleah asked me to put in my resume, not to leave here, you know that, but to be on, she wants a statewide data panel and I would go up and work with her and Ira and a couple of other people in the state, so I haven't heard from her yet. I'm hoping that they pick me for that because I think that I would be good for that. And she likes the way I do data as a spiral through data-wise and I tend to be very hands-on and very sharing with the information I have. So she, and I've shown her some stuff I've done here and other places and she's interested in using that statewide. So I'm hoping that becomes a model as well. So as soon as I hear about that, I'll obviously let you know. But I really would like to get parents more involved, but I have to tell you, it's very hard.
That's not on you, it was more of a general discussion.
Yeah.
We understand the impact of that. It's an administrative discussion.
So turned off, it's very hard to get them back. And I have to tell you, I'm very close at heart, I mean, Patrick and I have even had talks about assessments and special ed. I am very close to my heart about assessments and over assessing. I don't like to see that with kids. And the state exams this year, I'm actually happier with. I can tell you, P-values have only been released for the past year. So P-values are how difficult the test is. The state likes to try, P-values go from a zero to a 1.0. The harder the question, the lower the P-value. The easier the question, the higher the P-value. The state likes to do tests and have questions range from a .3 to a .5. I just did a correlation, an average P-value for every grade over the last three years and they range from, average for a test, they're pretty consistent. They're between a .55 and a .6 for the state. We here as a population, the four, when I say we, the four counties, we tend to test a little lower than the state. So one of the things I have in my report is we're going to the STAR, the teachers want to do the STAR math exam. I'm fine with that. I'm a certified trainer for STAR, NWA, iReady, so if they want to go with that, I'm happy to help them. So right now we have a pilot for STAR. And what it is, is it'll ask the teachers for this next week to try STAR as a teacher or to try STAR as a student. They can go in, look at the reports, they can also throw a few students on it as well if they want to see how the students like it as well for math. So far they're loving what's going on with ELA. They seem to like so far with math. Dan, Megan and I are going to meet with them next week, see how, if they want to go through with this. I'm working on getting a quote to add it. Costs should be very minimal because we're not changing the number of students or anything, we're not doing a setup. It's me going in and clicking a button and turning on math, not even STAR, not OCS, not anyone.
But we look, definitely look forward to those results.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that'll be. And what's nice is it'll compare us to the country, not just New York. So we'll be able to see how we do in New York as compared to the nation. So if we're higher, lower, average, which will give us a good idea. And then finally, Nicotel, this was a good thing with Nicotel. The RIC, we usually, we have a turnaround time where we tend to Nicotel exams to them via scanning and then they, what they do scrub and they grade and send back. Since I used to work for them, they gave us access. So they're now allowing me to scrub and score and send back to the teacher. So instead of a 72 to a four-day process, it turned to be a 24-hour turnaround.
Karen, you've been very busy, I think it shows in your report too, it's a very welcome thing to see.
I love it here, so I'm thrilled, thank you for having me. I think it's great and I have to tell you, my daughter goes to me, Mom, why didn't you do this job years ago? She love, I'm supposed to home, she's loving, in fact, I'm supposed to home. Never been this close, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pete.
Other than the reports that I submitted, the biggest deal we're working with or against right now is rain and more rain, moisture and humidity. Been reading the papers, there's a lot of information out there about the schools and problems. They have for the most part. We've avoided some of those because some of the techniques we use when we're doing the buildings in the summertime, we don't create P3 dishes, we don't close places up, we have the place open and have as much air moving as possible to keep things as dry as possible. But we do have some leaks, we have some leaks in the middle school, we have a leak in the middle school gym again today. And we have a leak in the classroom in the front of the building, which is probably to the stonework around the front entrance. And we have to solve that problem and we're working on that through OCS risk management. We've had a lot of problems this year, believe it or not, with our fields because we've had so much rain and so much moisture that the roots are rotting off the grass and the fields are actually probably going to be by the end of the season in pretty rough shape. And we'll have to try to do our best to rehabilitate them and get them up to. And we'll have to try to do our best to rehabilitate them and get them up to speed for the spring again. And we seem to have an awful lot of really fresh and new grass on fields, which is kinda working against us, because we don't have a lot of playing space, and we don't have places to move to to be able to stay off an area and save it for rehabilitation. So that's gonna be an issue probably more next spring than now. We had rain all last night, and we played soccer on the football field today, because basically we have to, and that's tough on field. Other than that, we're working away at fixing things and correcting or assisting with issues from the construction project and getting those things ironed out, and trying to look forward at everybody's request. We're doing everything we can. Any questions?
One question, you had something in your report about the, there's still issues with the auditorium lighting? Just wondering what they were, 'cause I wasn't familiar.
The auditorium lighting, there's eleven lights across the front of the house that are above, that shine on the stage. They were originally supposed to be wired in at a 2001/3 project. The wiring had begun for them and it was not finished. And one of the things that we were trying to solve this time was to get the rest of those front-of-the-house lights working, because there's only four of them that work right now. And we found that, after we got through assessing how we were gonna do that, how much wiring was there, and all that kind of stuff, that we have, some of those lights are incomplete in what the fixture is. So we're doing some homework to try to find what we have to do to replace or repair those lights so we can make them popper. That's the biggest part there. The new sound system, the new lighting control panel, the dimmer panel is in. The dimmer panel is now in the front room, so it's not out on the stage where you have, you're standing there and you hear that roar behind you, it's not there anymore. That was always a real problem, because it was so noisy. But all that part has been done. So basically, the front-of-the-house lights are an issue. The only other thing that has to be added at some point in time there is a long throw projector and a bigger screen, so that we can, you actually sit in the back row and see it, so.
These are the lights up on the catwalk?
There is no stage. The ones that, yeah. Yes, the lights that shine down from...
Ran out of coffee to see on there.
Yeah, yeah.
So these roof leaks, these are roofs that were recently resurfaced, isn't that accurate?
Yes. There's been a few spots here and there that are problematic, if we wanna put that away. In a high school, we have, we've had leaks with the expansion joints. The expansion joints haven't been replaced yet, but we did do some work on them with the roofer to make sure that they were as tight as possible until it got to that part of the project. The middle school gym has been a little bit of a headache. One of the issues there was a skylight that was replaced a while, a number of years ago, that needs to be replaced again, and a couple of leaks underneath the units, where the heating units are right on the roof, and there's leaks underneath them, so it's very hard to, there's a very small clearance to work underneath them, so we're just trying to repair that.
There's no way to put those on a drip pan? I mean, that's what they're doing with this larger equipment, they're just putting them on big drip pans, draining it out with a spout.
It's not the equipment that's leaking, it's the...
Penetration?
It's the roof itself that's underneath it. So they, it's not like they can, there's enough space in there to go in to reboat it, so there, we talked to him today about what he was gonna do to solve that problem, whether he was gonna do it by hand or with a bowler on a stick or whatever to get it sealed.
If anything in the area like that would be more protected, it's underneath something.
Except if it has a crack in it or something, which, you know, it could have.
On installation, yeah.
We had, we've had a number of problems on that roof in the last two years as the warranty came to a head, so.
Yeah. There's a problem during the basketball season. Good, any other questions? Karen, how are you?
Good. So, we're doing okay, we're holding Ira on, I think, this week. This is always a busy week, people, teachers really getting to their instruction. So for the tech department, this is the week, how do I do this, how do I do that? But I think for this summer, we did a lot of work, we upgraded every computer, there's just a smattering of Windows 7 machines out there. And they're not in places that will affect the instruction. We try not to mix our environment, so we upgraded everything to Windows 10, there was like hundreds of workstations, hundreds of laptops. The guys did a great job. So I think everything's running really smooth, we put in a great server, I thank you for that, I put that in my report. So I think that everyone is connecting well. The teachers are really, really learning how to use everything. We didn't really miss a lot of things, I don't think, as far as reinstalling all the programs that they needed, there's, seems to be less complaints. But the thing that's really interesting is, I have had a couple of comments from teachers about how the students are coming back ready. Students know how to log on, they know how to get to Office 365, they know how to get to Schoology, they know how to use the tools through, you know, fifth grade all the way up into high school. So I really see that we've built a foundation of skills with just talking about blended learning, talking about different learning environments in classrooms, and having teachers learn to instruct a little differently. And I just think that it's becoming comfortable for teachers to have students come back and get on a device, I just think it's almost remarkable. But I will say, too, that Mike started last week, yesterday, he's our lead replacement for Jose, he hit the ground running, answering the phone, just threw him right in, he's doing really well, he's gonna be a great addition to just help us solve some problems and just pick up the pace a little bit. We're, we always are swamped. But Kane is also relatively new, and this was his first opening, so we tried to prepare him, but I, a few times he comes back into the office and he's just like, oh, he's just like wiped out from just running around. But he's doing a great job. We've had, I just, I think it's been going really well, I think, you know, people just, no one's, I haven't had any real fires to put out. So, that's great, just getting caught up.
It was nice in your report, you gave a very testimonial for your summer hires.
Yes, Tom Hallway was a student here, and he started working for us this summer after his senior year, and he has been with us, he has so, been so reliable, and we've worked around his summer schedules. You know, he's very, very busy, and he's graduating college early, he's going on to get his master's at, you know, veterinary school. So we've just always just taken him whenever he can work, and he's gotten so much experience and he put in for this job that he never, ever, ever would've applied for, and it's gonna help him out. He just, he's gonna help his professors with their technology, and he was laughing, he's like, "I can't believe I can actually do this." But he needs, he needs his petty money, and he's gonna help him, so. That's a great benefit, I think, and we're gonna miss him, I'm just like, whenever you wanna come back, come back. I think we lost him, you know, yeah, I think he's moved on, so. But it was great, he was a great addition.
Yeah, that's good work.
To our department.
Good to hear.
But the other thing, too, that is not really stressing here, we've been working a lot over the summer, Chris and I, on new programs to educate teachers and new ways to secure our network, that's a huge thing, is cybersecurity. We did put in a couple of things, we beefed up some of the ways that we run our network through Microsoft. So we're still working on an education program for faculty, click, take a course, learn how to protect their data, protect their password, protect all their stuff at home. So that should be rolled out, I'm hoping within, you know, the next month.
Is there a way, I really liked the narrative about the elementary school, and I got a sense of what that model looks like, each class has got their five iPads for their center. Is there a way in a future report we could get a secondary breakdown? Not of the computers, they're fixed assets, but the devices that I, that a teacher could sign out for, and what that process looks like.
Right, I will do that, for sure. We just got, first week of school, we got a cell delivery, so it always crushes us if they show up.
Mine all came at the same time, too, I know.
So then, you know, so I hate to have them sit, but we have a full storage room. But yes, I will, and then I'll write the plan, what we wanna do with those devices that can be.
Great.
I also should say, we're on the obsolescence plan, too, for the standalone for workstations, so we're pretty much replacing four-years, we're on a four-year plan, when we bought all those transportation ones, we replaced all those this summer. So we're on a pretty good cycle with purchasing through BOCES for the, for the desktops. We seem to be maintaining.
I noticed in the computer lab, like, we took out more workstations than we put in, is that...
Yes, we, we took them out, we wanna be mobile. So for now, for the STEM, though, we had some pretty good beefy computers that were gonna go into labs in the middle school or in the high school, so we put some of those in for Mr. Watts, so they have a really good graphics card and they have a better, you know, solid stage.
So there's no computer lab in the high school anymore per se? They're all mobile?
Pretty much, yes. Only the couple periods that he's not in there. And so we're trying to make the library have more devices, more cards, more cards available for the teachers to take to the rooms and get them, so it's easier for them to do that.
That's good. Any questions?
Good evening, everybody. So Mike's report, I don't have anything really to add to it much, except it appears that my team last year, the team being the drivers and monitors, did something called Stuff the Bus, which is, they gather food and bring it to the local church, that's a big support in the backpack program. So October 5th is the homecoming, they would like to park a bus back by the fence and collect packages of food. Also, on November 3rd, they would like to be at the local Hannafords from just like 10 to 1 and take a bus and show our support towards our backpack program. I didn't have a lot to report, because I have to be honest with you, I have such a great support and team. When I say "team," my drivers, my monitors, they're showing up every day. We did have a great support, we trained a couple of our drivers, Loriann, Marion was one of them, that was a great support, just training drivers all summer, so we were very successful. The other pieces, I put a lot of requests in school, dude, I'm learning how to use all that. So Pete was a great support in freshing up with some paint and refrigerator, that, our refrigerator broke, and the drivers feel appreciated, and they feel like a team when I support them. Carol has been a great support with Seon for me and other technical, and it's been great, thank you. And then, of course, all the principals, when I'm out there, they work with me, they explain things. And Patrick, we had a few problems with some special need children that just needed a little bit of support under us, maybe a monitor, and we were lucky enough to have that right now for the startup, to help the difficult runs. As you know, on Tuesdays and Thursdays are CCD, there's extra kids, extra passes, and sometimes that monitor, just getting the school year started, knowing the children, those little guys, little baby cakes, so thank you, everybody, because my team couldn't be this great, and I couldn't do such a good job if I didn't have you people. Thank you.
Director, pupil, personnel service.
So we are basically into the full swing of things. The first two weeks, a lot of our related service providers are doing some screening, some evaluations, helping out in classrooms, and they start their services this month, so they're getting started. Our E&amp;L services are really beginning, those first two weeks, again, is a lot of screenings for our new students. Karen mentioned before the Nicotel's that we send through BOCES, that'll tell us some of these students that come in how much service they need and what it's gonna look like, so that'll dictate schedules. So it makes it difficult to plan prior to the year, because we're not allowed to screen them until the school year starts, so we really don't know the amount that we're gonna have and what it's gonna look like. So the first few weeks are very hectic, but we're at a point now where we have schedules pretty solidified, so we're ready to go. The, I think we've been talking about a little bit, but the homecoming week, the big goal this year was for that spirit week, and I think we have our spirit days finalized, so you guys will get to hear about that. I believe it's pajama day, sports day, Wacky Wednesday, I thought it's a fancy Thursday, they call it Dress Up Thursday, and then Friday's gonna be our blue and gold day for our homecoming. That was our big goal for this year, was to really try to connect us K-12, because we were doing such great things in all the buildings, but they weren't always lining up. So we're really excited that, about that, and hopefully to build on that each year to add a little bit more to this week, to make it really something special and really try to connect it with the community. Questions?
Any question?
A quick question, please, 'cause I don't have background, but in the homeschooling section, you noted the IHIP.
Yeah, it's basically the plan, so if you decide you were gonna homeschool your child, you have to submit a plan with it. So it comes with an agreement that you're gonna provide a certain amount of hours based on the New York State regulations, and then they have to provide a plan that we look at that would, you know, we would say, yeah, fits the curriculum, so if your child is, you know, seventh grade, would it fit the seventh-grade curriculum?
Individualized home instruction, you said?
Yeah, individualized home instruction, yeah. So, and then it lists out, so it lists out like what their courses would be, and then throughout the year, they have to submit reports to us that we look at, that lets us know that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then at the end of the year, depending on the grade level, sometimes it's a report, sometimes it's a standardized assessment that they take online, and then they submit results to us. So it's a way for us to just track their progress for those students.
And then you noted the three title grants that we got allocations for this year. Is that typical as compared to the prior years, or do we get different ones?
So our Title I was a little bit lower, our Title II was a little bit higher, and Title IV, this is the first time we've ever gotten a Title IV allocation, something new that the state put out. It's, they're calling it the Student Support and Academic Enrichment Program. Basically, some of the money, it seems like some of the money that we didn't get in Title I, they allocated to Title IV. So any school that got Title I allocation automatically got a Title IV allocation. So they're looking at calling it developing well-rounded education, so they're kind of being vague with that approach to it, but it's another set of money that we utilized.
And for the Title IV, what is just approximate now?
For Title IV was $29,549. And our Title I, $380,000, and our Title II was $72,000.
But the majority of that goes to salaries?
Salaries, yeah, so a lot of our AIS salaries are, comes from Title I.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Personnel, do you want to have an issue with us taking personnel as a block? That would be, how do you base your bill? You good? Okay, be resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following personnel items on the agenda, and that would be A through D. I have a motion, those, Ed and Evan, do you have any discussion?
Just the only question I had, those security guard positions that we're just, we're gonna create, okay, you're gonna talk to that one?
So in item C, creation of new positions, so back in July, we created three new part-time security guard positions. So that is a competitive title through civil service. So you created them, that is what we wanted, we posted, we only received a handful of applicants for that. We took all those applicants, and the way it works when it's competitive, sent to civil service, and civil service reviews the backgrounds, and then they decide if that person meets the requirements. And none of the people who applied met the requirements, and we, you know, reposted it and we didn't get any more. So I met with the union, we discussed it. When we look at the job titles, to make it a non-competitive, we wouldn't have to send it to civil service, really the non-competitive, it does what we want. A security attendant prevents admittance to the premises by unauthorized individuals, investigates in use room circumstances or disturbances, checks old windows, doors, et cetera, prevents damage, that's what we're looking for. The security guard goes into a lot of escorts, money shipments, can work in a courthouse, can issue vehicle citations, so there's actually a lot of things in that title that we don't necessarily need. We will certainly, obviously, still be looking for a background in security, but in a sense, more of a background in just common sense, a background in people's skills, and that's, that's what we're looking for for this position.
These are required background checks, aren't they?
They'll be, yeah, they'll have to do all the fingerprinting and everything else.
What does part-time mean? How many hours can you...
So this, so they can only work 20 hours a week. So they can only work 20 hours a week. That'll be five hours a day, or four hours a day, excuse me.
Can the plan still have the building, the plan decide, the building principal decide how they're gonna be used?
Yes. Yep, their hours might fluctuate a little bit depending on what activity is going on in the building that night.
That's still gets us to those talks.
Yes, that's the goal. Yep. So that's what you're doing, you're just creating that position presuming the board agrees to create. Then we'll post it tomorrow and in the meantime, we'll have some applicants that will be able to hire.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote?
So Mr. Miller, we do have, so our new senior security guard at the middle school, Jim Plasse is here, so anybody know Jim? He lives in town, he worked for the Lloyd Police for a time. So Jim, welcome, I'll give this kid a little wave. He's up in the Highlands, he'll be at the middle school working with Miss Connors and Mr. Wenzel. And I know they're very excited to have you join their team. It takes a special person to be a security guard at the middle school. He's the person for the job. Yes.
Thank you. Student, you're up.
Okay, so classes and clubs are in full swing here at the high school. There are a lot of clubs that had their first and second meetings this week. They've been very busy, a calm baby schedules is not always easy. Some clubs are looking into starting a backpack drive and others are looking and prepping for a town cleanup. The STEM signups have been a major hit in the high school. Mr. Watts was always loved by all of the students that he had and we're so happy that he could join the high school team. And a lot of kids are eager to increase their knowledge about technology and engineering. Within the next two days, well, they've been talking about building bridges online. Within the next two days, they're gonna actually start to do that, so how durable they are and get some background knowledge on that. So they're super excited about that. Once the students found out that Ms. Myers was going to be joining our high school team, they were so elated, kids were like overjoyed. Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Judge mentioned it during our class meetings and kids are just eagerly waiting her arrival. So going back to class meetings, Mr. Judge, Mr. Zimmer, Sarge, and our guidance counselors met with us last week. They went over expectations and different events that were going to occur during the year. They went over some hiccups that we had towards the end of the school year, dress code issues. But I think that it's been better since we discussed it, from my end I see it. I don't know from your end.
Absolutely.
But kids are being more receptive to that after they had the meeting about dress code last year. So they had some input and that was really appreciated. Students are also really proud of our football team, we're now four and O. We'd like to keep that streak. So we have been participating in different spirit themes for our games. So if you guys wanna join our homecoming game, I think it's gonna be beach themed, that was, that's been a rumor. We're also super excited about the district-wide spirit week, which is the homecoming week. And we are working on another spirit week, this is probably aimed towards the high school. That's gonna be the week after, which is the leading up to the Black and Blue Bowl. So we're gonna have hopefully our class colors on the day of the Black and Blue Bowl. And then after homecoming, our cheerleaders will be performing a nine-minute routine at the Jets game. So I thought that was really neat. One of the kids reached out to me and said, hey, can you bring this up to the Board of that? I said, absolutely. So they're really excited about that. Any questions?
Probably the Jets game.
And homecoming is again, what?
October 5th.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, business and operations, budget transfers. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent approves the following budget transfers for the 2018 and 19 school year as presented to the Board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 2239, 2242 totaling $77,407.40. Budget transfer 2234, 2236 totaling $281,166.65. I have a motion, please. Neil, Mike?
So these budget transfers are, it's just the, Mr. Gottlieb is just moving monies into the proper codes. The first one, the 77, that's non-teaching staff salaries and then the 281 is teaching staff. So it's just moving them around so that they're in the right place.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Well, I wanted to start by giving you another update about the backpack program. I had mentioned last week that we were having a district-wide meeting on Thursday. It was really a great meeting. We probably had about 15 district staff there, but also the whole community committee came. So we probably had six different community members that were there. So it was a really good way to start communication and really have a plan moving forward. So we spent some time giving an overview of the program. The United Methodist Church, as I mentioned last week, is connecting with the Food Bank of the Hudson Valley. That's a lot of paperwork. There's a lot that you have to do to be an approved site. They also want to be not just a site for backpacks, but for a food pantry overall. So that takes a little bit more oversight. However, as far as, as far as the meeting last Thursday, our first backpacks will go home this coming Friday. One of the goals of the meeting was to create a signup list of people who were interested in helping to stuff the backpacks every week. So we had one, a teacher who created a list of adult signups because we need to make sure that if there are students there, we have more than one adult in the room. And then Chrissy did a signup for students. So that already, I checked the list yesterday and there were already quite a few adults who had, who had signed up. So that's, that's going well. The second thing we talked about was just availability of backpacks. So we are doing a staff drive in all three buildings of backpacks. Just anyone, so anyone here that may have backpacks at home, that they're student or their children or their neighbors or whoever, no longer are using, if you would like to donate those to the program. And not only just backpacks, but string bags as well, the string backpack things. Feel free to drop them off at my office or the social worker at the middle school and the elementary school and our behavior intervention specialists at the high school are collecting all of those. But that's to get a start with the program because what we found over the years is very often the backpacks don't necessarily come back on Monday after, after they've been sent out. And so, or we might get, you know, we won't get any for a while and then someone will bring in seven of the backpacks, you know. So in the past...
Need some extras later.
Yeah, just to keep them, to keep it going. I think in the past that Mr. Diaz Pizito was probably buying the backpacks all by himself. So we definitely don't need that to be happening. And as Chrissy mentioned, I think once we get students involved too, that I think we should be able to keep them pretty well supplied. I did hear one of our middle school people said that a local company, and I don't remember which company, has donated 50 string backpacks as well. So I, that, there's been a lot of good response for that. And then, of course, helping to supplement what the Food Bank of Hudson Valley is going to give to the backpack program from within. And you already heard that the HSA has volunteered to do a stuff the bus both October 5th. And part of the incentive for stuffing the bus at the homecoming game is that anyone who brings a non-perishable food item to, to the game will get into the game free. So please spread the word. I hope people that are listening, there will be flyers around town and probably going home with students to hopefully, so that we can generate a lot to really get the program off to start. They'll be doing this stuff the bus, as you mentioned, I put November 2nd or November 5th. And then we also discussed having some sort of food drive once a month in each of the buildings. So we're looking at each building talking about how they're going to do that. We talked a little bit about the types of food for people to donate, again, to share with the public. But remember that these are, some of the children who are receiving them are young children. So things that are fairly easy for them to open, to use, so things like, not just juice boxes, but the juices are not the packaged, yeah, like goat, well, you can't really do Gogurt, but that type of thing with fruit, yeah, the apple sauce, the apple sauce. And, you know, easy mac and cheese that all you need to do is add the water and put it in the microwave. You know, things like that are especially helpful for, for students.
So I know at the wrong, I work with the wrong McDonald's that they regularly post what kind of, specifically what kind of, like you have typical ways like the individualized mac and cheese, stuff like that. But they post always what they can use for their mazes. I wonder if we can put a section down.
That's, that's kind of what we're thinking about because we're even thinking about that for the, the monthly food drives. You know, maybe focus so people don't just, so it doesn't become kind of background noise in their head. Maybe to revive interest every month saying, this month we're really focusing on, you know, packaged fruit.
What's currently needed.
Yeah. And that's, we kind of need to get things going a little bit so we know what we need to add. But I was just very touched by the amount of interest, not only in that meeting, but in the others who expressed interest but couldn't come to the actual meeting. So when I made up a big master list of everyone that I had heard from, we probably had about 45 members. So with that amount of people, we should be able to keep this going and to really support the people who have been doing amazing work really on their own for the last several years. So it's just a very exciting thing for not only our school community, but I think for the whole Highland community as a whole. So very excited about that. An update on the electronic device policy that we approved last week. We had said that we would be continuing that conversation. Megan and Ryan drafted a draft survey that we're going to share with teachers. The three of us are going to meet later in the week to go through, to go through the survey. I don't know how many of you have been involved in giving surveys, but the more people whose eyes have seen it and thought about the questions, the better because sometimes the question that one or two people come up with in their head, a third people reading it, third person maybe interprets it differently. So we're gonna talk about, you know, what exactly, what we're trying to get at and are we reaching that with the question? But we'll be giving that to the high school and middle school faculty, getting the results, and then having faculty meetings, you know, discussing the results at the faculty meetings to really talk about, does this represent where teachers are? You know, what is being, you know, what are the thoughts behind some of it? So we're in the process of doing that evaluation. So we should be, we're moving toward that fairly shortly. And then the last thing is, we had our instructional, our first instructional council meeting last week, which is the meeting of all the department chairs and grade level coordinators that we have once a month. And we really looked at professional development and where it's going. And I left them with a survey at the end. They're taking back to their grade level or department to prioritize for each different grade level, department, building, what the priorities are. What, with all these new standards that we have, with the technology that we're looking at, with the wellness initiatives that we have, mental health wellness, where do we need support? What type of support are they looking for? And so that I will be meeting with each grade level or department in October to discuss the results of those surveys and get an idea of, you know, are there areas of professional development that, you know, that I assume they've had enough of, that they still need? Is there some other area that they want to look at? So those discussions will be happening in October. And then I guess lastly, I really want to thank Chris Parker for being here tonight and presenting, but especially to the teachers and the staff, the administrators at the middle school for really taking on the literacy initiative. They did a lot of work and, you know, any, any research that you do shows that the more students have eyes on words, the better their performance overall is going to be. And so the sustained silent reading is a big part of that. You know, I hope that we can continue it moving into the high school. 9th grade already does that as well. So, and I, again, our scores are embargoed, so I can't publicly say much, but I see some results when we make our scores, the work that we're doing. So that's all I have for now.
So when you go into instructional council, is there some areas where, I like the whole team concept and what can we do? But is there some areas that you feel you're gonna go to the group and you need some improvement?
I gave them a whole list. There's six different goals. I'll actually be sharing that with you next meeting, the October 2nd meeting. I gave them a whole, not only a list of goals, but kind of our sub-initiatives be underneath each goal. And so they're looking to specifically get those to prioritize, like what they want to do. Not really what they want to do, but what they need help with most is really what I was.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Miller, that's Vice President. I'm going to incorporate, if it's okay, also the support service meeting update in with my report. I know it's a little later. So a lot of great things going on in the district at the beginning of the year. I know that we had, I want to thank Mr. Freer and all his staff, three nights of meet the teacher night. That's a lot of nights to have, so that's a lot of work for them, especially for Mr. Freer. I was there for a little while on the 11th before I went to the ceremony in the town. So that was a great job. Just to remind the board and the parents, upcoming, we have, we have this Thursday night is the middle school meet the teacher night from 6:30. Next Tuesday, the 25th, is the high school open house, they call it, correct? Then we have high school PTA, PTSA. Next Thursday, the 27th, the high school has their rock concert, the band rock concert. And this is, Mr. Schott won this as part of his Highland Education Foundation grant. And we have a musician coming in who has done extensive work with Van Morrison and other very famous singers and musical groups. And he'll be doing a rock concert with our band. So I know they'll be getting a lot of information on about that if they're already. So great stuff happening. I did cover Bon Jovi Rule Number 22 yesterday, so we're gonna keep those going next Monday. Support Services Meeting Committee, we met last week. The main thing we came out of, first we discussed the, where are we with the financing of the project that we're finishing up? So what are the finances, where are the finances at? So we reached out to Bernie Donigan, Chuck Bastian, who kind of put all those monies together. It's not like he can pick up a phone and say, hey, where are we at? And they just look it up. There's monies out, there's monies coming in. So it actually takes them a couple of weeks to kind of calculate that. We're meeting with them, myself, Mr. Gottlieb, and Lisa Gillette will be here also by then, our new business official. We're gonna meet with them on October 2nd. And on that date, we should have, so for that night, that's our next meeting, October 2nd, I should have an answer for you to where we are financially, a hard number. We will be sending out an RFP for a construction manager for the $8 million project. So I'm finalizing that with Mr. Miller. That will go out so that we can get rolling on securing a construction manager for the next project. Because a lot of things have been going on, a lot of the preliminary work has been happening for the past several months, really since May with CS Arch. Tom Ritzenthal from CS Arch will be here October 2nd. He is the architect on the next project. And he will do a presentation to the board to update you on where we are on that project. We are also, Day Automation is the company that we have been working with and secured for the Smart Schools money and the cameras and all the security vest, we will work. So we're getting a contract with them together so we can get that signed and get that work going. That's it for tonight. Again, there is, as you, as you know, there is no school tomorrow for students, but many of the administrators will be here, I'll be here if you want to come by for a visit, absolutely. Anything, any questions?
The only question I had is in the C S, the C S Arch discussion, are they also gonna be doing our construction management?
Well, they, so they will have an opportunity to put in for that. But no, not at the moment, they are just, they do have their own construction manager, and they have all the opportunity to put in for that.
Is it, so they're planning out the whole project, but there's no construction manager review of the project?
Correct, at the moment, yes.
At the moment, no.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Construction manager, architect lined up together is not necessarily the best.
Not at all, no, I agree.
That's what we're hoping for.
Excuse me?
I was saying they can put things through with this, you want to be checking the balance.
The managers, the eyes and ears of the district, and the owner, the district representative. And it's too cozy of a relationship. But they do have a great...
Sure.
Order bed, new business, foster county school board association meeting October eleventh. We got an email.
Right, I think we got an email, I'll be attending that.
It's also attached to the agenda.
Yep. So if you want to go, if you're going, you plan on going, just let Lisa know.
Old business, well, we just know the business.
I just did my report, yes.
Very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else we're going, that we're gonna bring up this time?
I don't, it might be exec session, there's not the... So we were talking, we got some information back from legal about whether we can have immunizations in the district or not.
Correct.
And I, you know, so the response was probably not the best idea. But I was just curious, because when you talk to attorneys, they would bubble wrap students and have them not interact because they don't want any issues. So we assume responsibility and risk for thousands of people every day. So I was just curious where legal was with that, because we do have a wellness responsibility too. This is a community partner spoke to us at the last meeting, certainly Hannaford's a big corporate partner, and we always like to grow partnerships. So I was curious if legal, if we could go back to legal and say, look, is this low, moderate, or high in risk? And the other agency I think we should touch base with would be nicer. I think there are insurance representatives, so if anything was to happen, we're insured. Do they have any recommendations as regarding providing access to immunizations to staff?
So as, as I always say, I'm not an attorney and I don't play one on TV. But the initial issue, which I suspected from the beginning, was the idea that while the shots are free, and it's fantastic service for our staff, our faculty and staff, that by having a private company, it's profit-making, they're still making money on it. So in a public school, you can't favor one private entity over another and allow them to make money in a public school. So that's really the main legal issue. The, it's really more, it's a little more secondary, the issue of that if we're liable, something happened.
And that first issue I was gonna point out is actually in the handbook.
Right, I'm sure that's a, it's a board policy, we'd be sort of violating our own policy. And I know that other schools do this, but they probably also, you know, didn't ask their lawyers.
Hannaford's is always incredibly generous with the community and everybody, very much respected by.
Yes.
Doesn't mean can't encourage.
Absolutely, can encourage, go get the flu shots. And I spoke to Mr. Paluzzi, he was, he completely understood and was very thankful for my quick response to him.
Public comments. Okay, executive session, be resolved at the Board of Education. I'd like a motion to close the opening meeting, go into executive session to discuss the following medical patent or credit in some industry of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, dispo, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Motion, please. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?